You ready?
Okay.
This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 p.m. Tuesday, August 17, 2021 in room 137 of the Edison Building. The board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People. We honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous Peoples. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com backslash ISD 535 where the live stream video may be found. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pikel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson?
Here.
Director Barlow. Director Garcia. Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan. Treasurer Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.0, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none.
Seconded.
It's been moved and approv-- moved and approved. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda is approved. 3.01, comments to the board. Although most community members correspond with board members by email or phone call, the school board has elected to provide 30 minutes at the beginning of regular meetings for individuals to address the board in person about issues that directly affect students. I'll say that again, issues that directly affect students. This is not a time or place to make a speech to a particular audience or constituency, and this part of the meeting is not livestreamed. Procedures and prohibited conduct are posted, so as you know, issues involving personnel, negotiations, and protected student data are not allowed. Personal attacks, abusive language, and disruptive behavior are always inappropriate at meetings where the primary goal is to discuss and make decisions about how to provide the best possible education for everyone's children. The board will listen and generally not respond to speakers, but we will be happy to connect with you later if you request further clarification or conversation. Each speaker will have three minutes, and we ask you to respect this limit so others will have their opportunity to speak. Ms. Severson will keep track of the time, and now it's on our screen. Thank you. When your name is called, please have a seat in front of the microphone, either microphone, at this table. State your name and whether you are a resident of this school district. And our first speaker, we welcome you, Ms. Anna Fall.
Thank you.
Teacher of the Year, congratulations to Natalia Benjamin, Dr. Pekel.
Good evening. Good evening to the board, board chair, board members, Dr. Pekel, Ms. Iverson. Tonight, I stand before you at the start of a new school year. Longfellow is already in. We have confusion about schedules, new staff members, changes all over the place, and we need a little bright spot. So tonight, we bring a little bit of optimism here, a little bit of sunshine into our world. Natalia Benjamin is, tonight, we're here to celebrate her. She is an exemplary member of our union, of our school district. And I've known Natalia, well, I worked with her as an FR, as a faculty rep for us, and as now recently on our board for our union. She is not afraid to bring new ideas to us. She's not afraid to challenge our thought processes. She's not afraid to ask us the why when we do things. It continues to refine us as educators. It continues to help us become better advocates for our students and our families. As a teacher up at Century, she's an Yale teacher there, I know she's a very strong advocate for her students, and I know she's a very strong advocate for her colleagues within the building. We are so lucky that she's in our district. And I think it bears out being elected, voted as the Teacher of the Year. It shows. It shows so much. So, I am, I know there's other people that want to speak tonight, but on behalf of myself and the Rochester Education Association, we would like to say thank you and to offer her a little something. I would, I would love it if Natalia would talk to you kind of about her journey of becoming that Teacher of the Year, and maybe what's a little bit ahead of her in her schedule, if she knows that yet. I think it's a little wild card yet. So, thank you very much. And Natalia Benjamin, Minnesota Teacher of the Year.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Pekel, and members of the Cabinet. Buenas tardes. Es mi honor poder dirigirme a ustedes hoy. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I hope that the recognition of Minnesota Teacher of the Year can bring light into the arduous work that Rochester Public School educators do for our scholars and students every day. It is after a year of teaching through a pandemic that we find ourselves at the beginning of another school year. This pandemic has shone light into the many inequities that our students face in their lives. And this is reflected in several data points that we all have access to. There's graduation rates where marginalized populations lag behind their peers, racial disparities in students reading at grade level, discipline disparities, increased mental health needs where students have to wait to get services at school, racial disparities in some special education settings, and underrepresentation of our community in gifted and talented advanced placement and honors classes. We must provide educators with the tools and resources to match their dedication and desire so that we can meet all of these students' needs. We need smaller class sizes, increasing in diversity of the staff so that it can reflect our community, incorporating schedules that make time for social-emotional learning and relationship building. We need more diverse curriculums and having materials and training for hands-on learning, just to name a few things. We need these structures in place to support students at all levels in school for their social-emotional learning from the early childhood to the high school students. I believe that we must build these spaces so that we can affirm our students' identities so that they can find success regardless of their socioeconomic status, their gender identity, or their racial backgrounds. Topics of racism, xenophobia, homophobia, sexism, ableism, and all the other isms tend to make people uncomfortable. Many say that these topics are divisive when division stems precisely from unchallenged words and actions based on these hateful premises. As we better understand our own biases and the multiple identities that exist in our classroom, we can fight against all these isms within our schools so that educators at Rochester Public Schools can prepare our students to be successful in a diverse, multilingual and multicultural community. We need to reflect on our practices. It's critical that we ask ourselves whether they benefit on the represented populations, and we must be courageous to change and know better so that we can do better. We must act with urgency and an intentional plan that will allow success for all, especially those most in need. I urge you to continue the work of equity and to not get sidetracked by distractors who do not have all of our students' interest in mind. We will need all of Rochester Public Schools educators in this endeavor. We have a lot of work to do, and I know that the educators at Rochester Public Schools can rise up to this challenge so that we can prepare every student at Rochester Public Schools for their future in a diverse society. And I hope that as this year of service continues that I can share this message with other people as the union has tasked me to, to share what is best for our students in education. Thank you.
Madam Chair and Board Members, I want to just add a couple of points about Natalia. I've only known her for about a month, and I already feel deeply privileged to have had the chance to interact with an educator of her commitment and her skill. I also want to call up one of my colleagues after board members have had a chance to share any thoughts that you want to share. I just want to say that this morning I conducted a workshop for about 100 of our new teachers who were awesome over at Mayo High School, and it was, of course, on relationships. And I try my best to have it build to this really positive ending. And Natalia doesn't even know this. I ended, and I was saying to these 100 new teachers, I was like, "And you are in the district with the Minnesota Teacher of the Year." And they cheered, and then, I'm not kidding, Natalia walked by the glass, volunteering with Rochester Education Association to meet our new teachers on a day when she didn't have to be there. And I was like, "That's her, right there." I've had the chance to begin to get to know her, to support the work of the employees who call her Resource Group, and the work that she's done as a multi-language learner instructor. And I am so excited on building that partner. And the only thing I want to add is this is not going to be a one-and-done. This is a recognition soon after you've received this amazing honor. We want to have, hopefully, when we soon get beyond some of our COVID restrictions, a celebration. And more than that, we want to lift up this extraordinary honor over the course of this year that you're serving as Minnesota Teacher of the Year, to learn from the things that the state education association has recognized in your career here at home. We also know we're going to lose you for a bit because part of the role is to go out into the state and to share your insights with educators across Minnesota, and we fully support that because we think that what works for the state as a whole is in the end going to work for Rochester Public Schools. So, congratulations. Thank you. And I, I know board members joined me in their excitement about this opportunity.
Thank you. And Natalia, not only do you have great timing in terms of showing up exactly when you need to for a room full of teachers, you, I think it's been pointed out, you were the first ever Rochester teacher to be named Minnesota Teacher of the Year, and we couldn't have a better representative both for our state and this country. So, we are so proud. You deserve it so well, and we know you're going to continue to make a difference. But you have to, after this year, promise that you're going to stay in the classroom here. So, there's, I think there's, is that in her contract?
It will be tomorrow.
Will be tomorrow. So, other, other board members? Go ahead.
Muchisimas gracias por su trabajo, en felicitaciones, bien hecho. I'm so proud of you. I, like Superintendent Pekel, haven't known you incredibly long, like some of the other people here in the room, but I feel also very privileged and fortunate to, to just be in the same space as you. And I think that this is a well-deserved award and recognition for all of the wonderful work that you do in our district. So, muchisimas gracias.
Natalia, you are a superb teacher of students, but you are also a superb teacher of adults. I've gotten to know you over the past few years in, in the work where we've tried to put into words the equity work that we hope the district does going forward. And you've taught me so much by just sharing your story, by, by bringing the stories of your students forward, by teaching them to be advocates. And I'm, I'm so proud that the rest of the state is going to have, is going to be able to see everything that you bring to this district, and I look forward to all the work we're going to do together in the future. Congratulations.
And Madam Chair and Board Members, the, the whole cabinet was sort of vying for a chance to say a few words. And in the interest of time, we want to ask someone who is very new to that role, but a longtime colleague of Natalia's, Will Ruffin is our Executive Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I asked him just to share a few thoughts about this really extraordinary accomplishment of a longtime friend and, friend and colleague of his. So, Will.
It's hard when I'm talking this way and she's behind me. I randomly met Natalia a few years ago at a union training. We, we knew each other or knew of each other, but we had never met.
Will, we want to get all of this recorded. Can you speak into the mic? Thank you.
Sorry. We, we had never met. And right away, I think it was an emergent leaders training or something like that, that I'd met you. And when you just spend five minutes around Natalia, you just start to... you just start to, you get sucked into her. And it's, it's hard not to be a part of your story. But we all know that you care about your students. I think many teachers do. But I, what I wanted to tell you that you also care about developing the leadership capacity and the competency of all the adults in our district so that we won't have just one Teacher of the Year, but maybe we can have many more to come. And I also wanted to let you know that that's something that you've done for me personally. I'm a better person because I know you. I'm a better leader because I've learned from you. And I just wanted to make sure that I said that publicly in front of everyone. So, thank you for being you. Thank you for making our district better. And our students and our families are lucky to have you in their lives. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next agenda, item 4.02, Cradle to Career. This is an update. Information item, Julie Brock is here from Cradle to Career, the Executive Director.
Good evening. That's hard to follow, but I'm super, super excited because Natalia's a boss. And that's just what I just tweeted too. So, boss. Thank you so much for having me today. I'm so excited to share with you some of the findings that we have out of our high school network today. So, this June, we, our high school network organizations wanted to learn from the youth that are in their programs. So, the high school network is comprised of both, of Rochester Public Schools programs, local young serving, youth-serving organizations, and other high schools in our city. In June, partners and Cradle to Career co-hosted get-togethers for youth to learn more about their experiences within these programs over the last year. The program asked three big questions on a scale of one to five. Those questions were, do adults respond to your bad day? Do you feel like you belong in the organization or the program? And do you feel like your ideas count in the organization or program? And out of those three, most scored just over four. However, the one that was the farthest away from a, a perfect five was, do adults respond to your bad days? That actually came in at a 4.39. As part of a facilitated conversation, students provided more information about what they like, don't like, and would like to see in the future in these programs. When asked what their hopes are for the program, most asked for more students to be involved, close relationships and friendships between students, more resources for the programs that they were involved in, and support and resources provided for their future. All of those above hopes are also about relationships and about relationship building and about trust. Youth feel like staff responded to bad days when staff are being proactive and engaged in the programs that are connected to youth. Youth also feel like staff do not respond to bad days when staff maintain emotional distance and are there to get a paycheck. So, Cradle to Career, we support face masking across PK to 12 so students can be together in spaces and can access the resources needed for their health and wellbeing. Students deserve equitable school experiences. And in-person settings are vital for students to get the help that they need. That's what we learned over the last year. This is what our kids are asking for across our community. Our data aligns with what we are seeing across the state and nation. That connection, true connection to trusted peers and teachers and program staff is necessary for students to feel safe, supported, and successful. And this is why the high school network is focusing on trying to make sure program staff are culturally competently trained and engaging students where they are, help the students identify their goals and ambitions so that they are successful now and always as learners in charge of their destinies. This is real-time data that was collected in June 2021. I wanted to make sure that you knew that going into the school year that our kids need desperately to be in touch with their peers and with their educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brock.
Any questions?
Thank you. 4.03, Board Member Committee Updates. Are there any committee reports? Ms. Workman.
Yes, I have one that's coming up. If you haven't already seen it, either in your snail mail or in your mailbox here, there is a letter from the Minnesota School Board Association concerning the Legislative Advocacy Tour that's coming up on September 1st. There is a link in that email that you can access this meeting from. There are also five questions that they would like us to think about. And what I think I will do is to send those to Dr. Pecel so that he can better inform us as to how we could be better advocates for our district with this legislative group.
Thank you. Then the Consent Agenda. Any items to be removed for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The Consent Agenda is approved. And we have four retirees who we always like to honor, our retirees. And I always like to put the superintendent on the spot. So, it's kind of a win-win.
Who, who almost certainly doesn't know these people, but would have admired and loved them had I known them.
Absolutely.
I am honored to recommend, with apologies for butchering any names, Benita K. Sawyer, who's been an adult literacy teacher at Hawthorne Education Center. She's retiring effective at the end of the day, October 28th, 2021. She's been with our district for 24 years. That's in community education. We have some paraprofessionals who are retiring. Lorieanne Dubois is a special education paraprofessional at the Education Service Center. And Rail, and is retiring effective August 2nd, 2021. So, that's complete. She's been with the district 23 years. Denise Ray Tompkins is a special education paraprofessional at Mayo High School. Retirement will be effective, was effective July 31st. She'd been with the district for three years and in student nutrition services. Catherine A. Lee has been an associate at Mayo High School. Retirement will be effective at the end of this month, August 31st. And she's been with the district for six years. And so, we thank all four of these professionals and we wish them the best for what's next.
Thank you. 7.01, School Resource Officer. This is SRO Memorandum of Understanding. This is a briefing item. Dr. Pecel.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. This is one of many issues that at Rochester Public Schools, I had the chance to get on the train that had already left the station and gone down the road quite far in the tracks. As board members are aware, we have continued to have school resource officers from the Rochester Police Department in our schools. I was very pleased to note that we have those officers in our schools when I got here. That's not the case everywhere around the country. But I was also pleased that we have had a rigorous discussion with the Rochester PD about the role of those school resource officers. I was fortunate to attend the last meeting of the working group that we convened with the Rochester Police and a diverse array of district, not just staff, but also students, to look at the role of school resource officers. As board members are aware, this MOU and the idea of it came up as you were considering the renewal of our annual contract with RPD for these services. And there was clearly a sense that especially as the district has embarked on a different level of emphasis on equity and with some changes that are happening in society, we needed to have a conversation and reach some new agreements. I am very enthused about the result of this effort. The MOU that is here really paints a vision of the role of school resource officers that reflects both best practice and I think aligns with where we as a community want and need to be. And there's a lot of things that are in the agreement. And board members, I'm going to ask Scott Sheridan, who as most of you know has been our Executive Director of Operations, to come up and also make some comments. And Chief Jim Franklin from the Rochester Police will ask him to come up in a moment as well and, and start us out with some thoughts from his perspective. I will just say, a lot of districts have gotten this wrong. And I think we have a chance to really get it right. But this is the beginning of a journey, even though we may be realizing this agreement not the end of a journey. There are a lot of things that are challenging about the role of police officers in schools. But something I was very enthused about from my first meeting with Chief Franklin was that he and then the rest of his team who I've met understand that school resource officers are not average cops. They're a very special breed who is really willing to build relationships and to work with kids, to know where the line of their responsibilities begins and ends. It's not school discipline. It's building the capacity of the school community. And it is being involved when there are issues of criminality that arise. I'll just tell you, some of you know, my wife was a middle school principal and she had a school resource officer in the school who was everything we want in an SRO. And was a critical, positive relationship builder. He was injured, totally outside the context of work and had to retire. And in the separate city, they put a new officer in the school. And this was a guy just off the street, is by all accounts a good cop. And he was not right for working as a school resource officer. The chief in that city made a shift and they put, got it back into a new place. And I know that Rochester Police Department has appreciated that as well. Getting the right people into this role is critical, but so is getting the right procedures and processes. And I think this MOU gives us a good chance. But as I said, it's the beginning of a process, not a culmination. So, I recommend that, that we approve this and move forward with the understanding that many of you's board members have longstanding experience with these issues and will have, I'm sure, some good feedback and thoughts for us. So, if Chief Franklin, I could have you come up and then, many of you know that Scott Sheridan, who we are fortunate to have wearing many hats in our school district, one of which was, by all accounts, being one of those kinds of school resource officers earlier in his career that we want in our schools with our kids. So, thanks to you both. And Chief, I know you have a million things on your schedule tonight. So, thanks for stopping by with us to, to share some thoughts from your vantage point.
Yeah, absolutely. Superintendent, Madam Chair, School Board, thanks for having us here. I think I'm going to keep my statements brief here and then I'll give an opportunity to answer any questions that you might have. But I think what you have in front of you is a reflection of where we've come from. And that's our commitment to creating a school resource officer program that we can all be proud of, that we can see is effective, efficient, and is something that we all desire to have. And, and that commitment came out, came out of those discussions that we had earlier. Again, coming together in a collaborative effort. And I think what you have in front of you is that culmination of that collaborative effort coming together to get the program where we want it to be. And that's, that's not a one and done commitment. And it's not a one and done collective effort. This is going to be a continuous conversation throughout the school year with staff and with the superintendent, et cetera, in dealing with things that pop up, if they pop up, and continuing to revamp and revise the program to create the best program that we possibly can to deliver the highest level of public safety to the schools within this community. And quite frankly, it's, it's reflective of the same commitment that we have to policing within this community.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Board Members. Just to follow up on what Chief Franklin was saying. Just, I provided you a pretty substantial background in the board doc as far as the makeup of the committee. As the superintendent said, it was a very diverse group of individuals. I found them very engaging. They were phenomenal to work with. The work wasn't just at the meetings themselves. There were three meetings, about an hour and a half each. A lot of the work was back and forth, behind the scenes, between the district and the police department. A lot of that was headed by Captain Stillwell, who oversees the program right below the, the chief. Lieutenant Thompson, who oversees the SRO program as well. And then Sergeant Blonik, who is the direct supervisor for the SRO program. In the school district, like I said, we had a, a very large group from all different areas. We included special ed. We included the Director of Special Ed, Student Services, I mean, the Equity Specialists, the HR Equity Staff, myself, of course. And we also had the, the pleasure of having two students. We had some difficulty getting the students to come. We did actually have a lot of input from the students because the Equity Specialist prior to the end of the year, after the directive in April to form this committee, the Equity Specialist went out and had engagements at all the, the high schools and collected data. So, we had a, a pile full of data to go through. And like I said, a lot of that was done outside of those meetings. But everybody then brought back their input to the meetings. And some, the majority of the credit for the, the format of the MOU goes to Captain Stillwell. We, we went back and forth redlining things and, and changing things. But it, it became very clear that initially, the direction from the board was they asked us to review 2D of the current contract. And that had to do with the, the duties, the daily duties of the SROs. And it's, it's really difficult to put down on paper every little type of duty that an SRO might be involved with because it's, it changes every single day, just as it does for a patrol officer on the street. And we, we quickly realized that that document could go on and on and on for pages and pages. And so, our intent was, let's create a document as a memo of understanding that outlines the philosophy of what the program is, what the district's vision is, and what the police department's vision is, show how it's merged together, that we're working collaboratively, collaboratively together in this endeavor. And like the chief said, this isn't an end-all right here. I'm sure there'll be modifications in the future. There'll be changes along the way to make this better and better. But I firmly believe this phenomenal group that we had together to work with has put together a, a very fine document for you, you to review and to give us feedback on.
Thank you. And I'm guessing there are going to be some questions from board members. Let me say first, though, that I was especially impressed that part of the MOU is the agreement that there would be monthly meetings with students and staff. That's one of the things that our students were telling us is that they wanted that opportunity to talk with the police officers about what their concerns were and, you know, make sure that, that the people in their buildings really understood the kids in that building. So, I think that's a major, a major improvement. And thank you for that. Questions or comments, board members? Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Garcia.
Doctor Garcia.
I, I just want to thank everybody who worked on this. And I guess I'll just go first because I'm typically the negative Nancy on this issue. I can appreciate all of the things that would have to go into, you know, writing out every single task an SRO does, either in an MOU or in the policy. And there are some decent changes, particularly around the language. But I feel like the document is so vague. I don't know what to do, to do with it. It's our intent and mission as leaders, I think, to engage in culturally responsive, which, as Ms. Hicks mentioned, would also include trauma-informed responses to our community and to reduce the interactions of oppressive systems on our students and those in the, the larger community. So, I still don't see that reflected in the MOU in the way that we had asked for it initially. And it does not make explicit the changes that, that I'm already being told are made. And I see, you know, via social media and through conversations with other officers in RPD, that there are these positive things that are happening. And I, I just felt like it didn't come across here. And I want to make sure that that is present. I also think that, like, where is our transparency and vulnerability, both as the district and as the police department, in, in tandem doing this work, that we're, we're recognizing that we are a larger part of that oppression? And I think that this discipline data that we go through, I have, a lot of this, to me, feels very interconnected. That's what our community needs to hear. And so, during our last meeting about this, I made very clear that I wanted a radical reimagining of what we were going to do differently. And I just, I don't think that that comes across here. And just a few questions, I guess, that I just kept coming back to when I read the MOU is, if, if the intent is to be a law enforcement officer, for what reason would you need to respond to any requests from the district on our property where a law is not being broken? I also see a lot of comfort in continuing to be a tertiary or reactive response system rather than doing some of the identifying and figuring out how we can, how we can do this preventatively. And I also want to just say, yes, the comments may seem harsh. And I do not want to disparage any of the work that, you know, many people have done on this. But I feel like what I know is happening behind the scenes didn't come across at all in this. And so, I feel like that radical reimagining, it didn't, it didn't hit or exceed the mark for me. So...
Ms. McLaughlin and then Ms. Amundson.
I'd like to start by thanking Dr. Pecel for his comments. I think it was good to hear a different perspective from, from our superintendent about this issue because... because it's extremely important to our district. Chair Marvin, I also appreciate your comments about the meetings with students, but that's kinda where I wanna start with my comments and my questions, is that the MOU, I think it's an improvement, but I agree with Dr. Garcia, that it's just not far enough that I had hoped we would be at this point of reviewing the MOU to add to this current contract. The example I would give, I guess, is that in item, excuse me, 3C, it talks about, as Chair Marvin talked about, addressing the concerns of students and meeting with the students. I would like to see that more explicitly expressed in that paragraph to talk about things like addressing the concerns about equity, addressing the concerns about social justice, specifically addressing the concerns that students have expressed about incidents of police violence. I think the students are mature enough at the high school level to have those conversations with their SROs, and I think that this paragraph needs to make that explicit, because it also, later in the paragraph, talks about things like equity training. If we're not expressing explicitly what to have those conversations about, that training on equity and inclusion just doesn't fit with the rest of that language. So, that would be my feedback on that paragraph. And I guess I would present it with a question as well, related to the very first paragraph about the beliefs. And I believe that, so let me take a step back. After the, we had this discussion earlier, I actually spent several hours with several of the SROs at their schools. They do wonderful work, and they do very student-centered work. But that doesn't come across in this document. That's where I agree with Dr. Garcia. So, the first paragraph talking about this commitment and the shared belief in our students, how do the officers and how does Rochester Police Department plan to demonstrate these beliefs to the students, the families, and the staff? That's the question I have for you, Chief Franklin.
I think first and foremost, thank you for the question. I think first and foremost, the way you demonstrate that is your willingness to come to the table. And I hear your concern, or I hear your reflection on paragraph C. You know, the key word to me is, SROs will meet with students and staff on a monthly basis to address concerns. Concern could be defined in a wide variety of ways. And so, I think there is wiggle room within that paragraph to fit in equity discussions, social justice discussions, et cetera, just by the broader definition of that word itself. How do you demonstrate your willingness? Again, that's coming to the table. And then I wanna address something Dr. Garcia said, you know, in reference to, I look at school resource officers. Certainly, we can all agree that law enforcement has had a rough, several months here, and we've got room for improvement to make. But the SROs are really that proactive, in my view, is that proactive vehicle engagement for the youth, of winning over the youth for tomorrow. Because let me tell you something, if we don't do that, we're going to lose the next generation. So, I look at this as an opportunity to really get school resource officers in front of kids in a time of non-crisis, non-enforcement, in a safe environment, to tear down some of those barriers, to build those bridges with the students of the future. That is of the utmost importance for us in law enforcement today. And I look at the school resource officers as the vehicle to help me do that in winning over some of the kids for tomorrow.
Can I just have a follow-up? That's what needs to be in this document, Chief Franklin.
Yes.
People can hear that at the public meeting, but seeing it in a document that can be shared more broadly would be extremely helpful on that topic, so I appreciate your comments.
Ms. Amundson.
I have a bunch of random points that I'm trying to weave all together into something coherent, and I'm afraid it's not going to happen, so bear with me. I was pleased and honored to be welcomed on what you call a ride-along, which was more a walk-along, but I was actually able to ride between buildings in a police officer's car. So, it was a ride-along as well. I was able to witness an unplanned event that I could see firsthand the need to have officers in our schools. I get it, I do. I was also able to see some of the daily tasks of our officer at Phoenix Academy, and I heard a firsthand account of an example of why SROs are the only people who can do some of the jobs that our SROs do, such as looking at the call logs from the previous day or the night before, the previous weekend, and seeing where some incidents might have happened to disrupt students' lives, and they bring that with them to school the next day. And that type of information is extremely valuable in our partnership between the schools and the police officers, because we are able to respond to those children's needs better if we know what's happening outside of the school building. I don't know of any other way to accomplish that. Perhaps there is, perhaps we can look at it creatively. So, I wanna be the first person to say that I was very impressed with the people that I met and impressed with the job that I watched them do. That being said, I think that we can all agree, the police officers and the school district and the public, that in a perfect world, our tax dollars would not be going towards paying police officers to be in our schools. Whether that's the world we live in or not is arguable, but ultimately, what I would like to see is a list of tasks that our SROs do, and then an evaluation of whether or not that's the best use of our money and their time, and whether or not those tasks could ultimately be done by other professionals who could serve the kids' needs in a different way. I'm not asking for SROs not to be in our schools. I'm asking for an examination of what is done, what is needed to be done, who's doing it, and who's best to do it. That was what I maybe didn't articulate well enough when we went into this process, but that's what I would like to see going forward. It is really outside of this memorandum of understanding. It's really a long-term process that I'm hoping our district can undertake. I would like to see, Mr. Superintendent, at least six months before we have to decide on signing the next contract, I would like to see a discussion by the board and potentially a task force to be convened to examine where we want to go. I would like to charge the task force with examining what other large urban districts have done in Minnesota and possibly around the country in their redesign of how they use their SROs, or some of them have removed SROs entirely. I think we can learn from other districts and their experiences and not try to reinvent the wheel ourselves. That would be my request, and obviously, I, you know, would need to hear from other board members their feelings on that. Regarding that, the memorandum of understanding specifically, I continue to be disappointed with the issue surrounding uniforms specifically. And I know that we agreed in previous study sessions that the firearm issue is a non-negotiable coming from the side of the police department. They will not discuss that. I am opposed to having firearms in our buildings, for whatever reason, because I don't believe that the argument, if a police officer needed their firearm to respond to a school shooter, and they'd have to go and get it from their car or from a safe in the office, which was the happy medium that I asked about, recommended, because we don't have officers in our building 24/7. They aren't always in our buildings. So, that isn't, in my understanding, what is in the contract or what is in the memorandum of understanding. It's not to have an armed officer on hand in case of a school shooting. So, to me, that isn't a logical argument. I feel like the message that it sends to our students, that we have uniformed and armed police officers in our schools because we expect there to be trouble, because we expect officers to need to respond using force to student behavior. I think it's not the kind of message we should be sending our students and our staff and our community, that our schools are such a dangerous, volatile place that we require people in uniform with guns. That's how I feel about it. And I would like to see us all work together to move to a point where that's not a perception of a need on anyone's side. That is my main concern with this MOU, and I respect that the people who are in the best place to make those decisions are the people in the schools. But some of the people in our schools are our students, and I've heard from students specifically how they feel when they see an armed and uniformed police officer. And the MOU says it will be a collaborative decision between the school administration and the Rochester Police Department. And I think that leaves out the people who are most affected on an emotional level when they see a uniformed and armed police officer every day walking past them in the halls or whatever that be. We all know that our students can't learn unless they feel safe in their environment. If they aren't feeling safe, that's my concern. So, that is my number-one problem with the MOU. I respect what others have said, that it doesn't, it isn't specific enough and it doesn't go far enough. I think we can continue to work on that, and I'm fine with that. But I just want to register officially my disappointment that we weren't able to come up with some sort of a more concrete...
I'm meeting halfway on that issue. Thank you. And Chief Franklin, do you wanna speak to the issue of having, of being armed while you're in the building, or SROs being armed while they're in the building?
Yeah, and again, I don't wanna be misconstrued. I think what I said previously was, the disarming of school resource officers is off the table, but the discussion of, you know, what the uniform looks like, or maybe wearing a suit coat, or a untucked polo shirt, or something like that to take away that visual piece, if you will, is on the table for discussion. And I think that was captured in here, in one of the sections here, and be a collaborative discussion. But I think we, there's, what I like about this is there's wiggle room in there for threat assessment, and if you've got an active threat against a school, you may want a uniformed officer as part of your protective services. And that's really, quite frankly, what makes the challenging of a task list for the officers is, you know, they're here for, to create this safe environment for the students to learn in. In the meantime, while you're doing that, do it with a smile on your face, and do it while you're engaging kids, building relationships. And I think, to your point, I think what perhaps is missing, and maybe we can capture it with some wordage, is a commitment to tearing down those barriers. Because quite frankly, I don't think the answer is just saying, this child is traumatized because of the uniform. I don't think that's setting the child up for success moving on later in life. And what a better place, I can't think of a better place than the safety and security of a school to help a child navigate some of those trauma issues or whatever's triggering them, so later in life, when we see them on the street as adults and have interactions with them as adults, that we have better policing outcomes. And so, that's our commitment, is to address those. If it's a matter of coming together and saying, in a facilitated manner, of explaining the uniform to a kid, sitting down, having lunch with them or whatnot, and having a safe dialogue, explaining why we have what we have on our duty belts, we're willing to do that. Again, I look at it as, let's address the root cause of what's causing the triggers, maybe not just kind of putting a band-aid on it and saying, well, we still wanna see it.
Dr. Pecow, and then Mr. Barlow.
I really appreciate the comment that several board members have made, and you talk, when you talk about a radical reimagining, I wasn't around for the origins of this. And so, the board may at the time have been very clear, but I'll just say, as somebody kind of coming in and encountering an MOU process between two organizations, an MOU process between two organizations would have been the wrong way to do a radical, to explore a radical reimagining. This is, an MOU is by definition how two organizations are going to work together better within their existing paradigm. You don't do radical reimagining through an MOU. A task force, as you mentioned, that actually looked at best practices elsewhere and was frankly not facilitated by either organization, which is not because we didn't do a great job facilitating, but when you're running the process yourselves, you don't have someone who's neutral, who's actually guiding a really inclusive visioning process. And so, I think this is a good MOU. I don't think it meets the intent of what you're talking about. Now, I can't, as I said a minute ago, speak to the board's initial intent, but I don't think we structured it right if we wanted radical reimagining. I think we have a significant enhancement of collaboration between two organizations, as opposed to something that was larger, because the structure wasn't actually, and the deliverables weren't necessarily set out right. And I'm not faulting anybody who actually managed it. I think it was a well-managed process of two organizations saying, we're working together, we're gonna do it better. But it sounds like, from the perspective of a number of board members, it fell short of some of the issues that you wanted to have explored. So, looking forward, one thing that some places have done is not just look at this in the lens of school-police collaboration, but look at that as a critical component of safe and welcoming schools, or belonging schools. So, you have a larger strategy, and then you ask, to what extent is our collaboration with SROs or the police enhancing or getting in the way of that larger strategy of all kids feel safe and welcome in our schools? So, I do feel a need to inject that question of process, because process is critical here. And if we were thinking of that kind of more radical reimagining, we may not have set up the process in the way that might have led to some of those ideas. I don't know if we would have reached consensus on something like that. But for instance, I don't think the charge was, at least in anything I saw, to go look at what other cities are doing. I think it's actually a great idea, but I at least, so, I think some lessons learned for us as we get into our strategic action plan process, to really define our scope and intent really clearly, so that you, as decision-makers at the end of the process, really feel like what we did in implementing the collaboration reflects what you hoped you'd see at the end of the rainbow. So, some thoughts there for somebody who is coming into the process way down the road.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Dr. Pecow, and fellow board members. I'll speak briefly to the, some of the elements of the MOU. Chief Franklin, I do recall when you were candidateing to become a chief of police, you spoke of the bank of trust. And for me, I see value in that, and this MOU represents drawing potentially, well, a withdrawal and a depositing simultaneously occurring. I think we can trust the process. We have built in, within the current MOU, the capacity to reevaluate within years we have with each of our previous MOU agreements. And not that I think we should give the benefit of the doubt, but we can certainly trust what is being placed before us. I appreciate the fact that human resource equity specialist was involved, students were involved, things which perhaps weren't necessarily the case in the past, at least to my recall, I might be mistaken. Though I see those things being very positive and a step in the right direction. And then finally, I believe it's also important for our students to, well, the acknowledgement, if you will, of the legacy policing, I think briefly of the OCR report that did at that time. Our police were being used on occasion to, in the role of discipline, to whatever degree and however that may play itself out. So, to ignore that that has not occurred in this district would be perhaps a minimization of where that trauma may come from, because these may be younger siblings of those older, their older brothers and sisters who have that take. And yet, I'm willing to support the current MOU and allow our feedback and internal mechanisms to run their course and to, not that I'm waiting to see it fail, I'm waiting to see it succeed. I believe each of us wants this to be a successful relationship, and don't want any of our students to ever feel intimidated, or to, like me, not necessarily feel nervous when there's a cop in back of you. So, I want them to have that freedom to, you know, learn, to just relax, and to know that there's nothing to be fearful of. that there's nothing to be fearful of.
Thank you. And let's refocus maybe. The resolution in front of us is whether or not we will approve the MOU. For everyone who's listening, the board already approved the agreement between the school district and the police department to have SROs in our building next year. We asked that there would be an MOU that would be presented to the board before school started this year. There are, what, 10 people who've been involved in that meeting four times, and this is what they came up with. Now, I think some good points have been raised about going forward this year, how do we assess whether this relationship is working or not, whether this MOU is adequate or not, whether we want to continue the relationship in the future or not, are there alternatives? And I think that's a great idea. But right now, we're looking at whether we will approve the MOU or not. And honestly, I, if we don't approve it...
Right, what is the difference? Because we're doing it any, I mean, they're here anyway.
Well, they're here.
My sense, if we don't approve it, we're with the agreement that we already approved in April and not the MOU.
Right. Just the contract.
So it would be worse if we don't approve it, because from my perspective at least, and I get your point about this isn't everything, but it's a heck of a lot more than we've had in writing before. And it really, again, from my perspective, expands the scope of the relationship building that we would expect our SROs to do. So to me, that's a real, that's a really positive thing. Certainly not the end, but as Dr. Pecel said, the beginning of exploring a different kind of relationship. Dr. Garcia.
But if it's voted down, then it gets updated, we don't look at it again for the six months when we were asking for a task force, like what happens to it?
That is such a good question. And, well, the thing is, the agreement was that an MOU would be presented to the board before the school year began. So it's being presented, and if we don't approve it, maybe Ms. Nathan knows.
Well, I think Director McLaughlin is correct. If we vote it down tonight, then the only thing guiding the work of the SROs is the contract that we approved in April, and they will begin their work in our buildings under that criteria, which did not include, for example, the piece on the uniforms and talking about alternatives, and did not include the monthly meetings. So we could continue to have a conversation about the language, but the longer we have the conversation about the language, the less time the SROs are actually implementing the language during the school year. So personally, the way I look at it is that I recognize the two pieces of thought that my fellow board members have talked about, which is the short term and the long term. And I was part of the conversation at the last meeting where we talked about the reimagining, I think that's a good word for it. I support what Director Amundson said about the feeling last time is that we didn't have enough time to talk about the bigger, longer-term visioning issues of roles of SROs in the approval of this contract for this year. So I would support going forward, looking at a timeline, whether it's part of the strategic plan conversation, or whether it's, you know, part of its own conversation, setting that conversation up for success, so that we really feel like we've had that full conversation. As far as the wording in this MRO, oh, sorry, this MOU, I thought it covered most of the topics that had been brought up by the board specifically for this upcoming year. I will say that the monthly meetings with the students, Chair Marvin and I sat in with a number of video calls with students when we were talking about the SRO contract. And it was really clear, there are so many students who do not have any understanding of the role of the SROs. I'm not sure monthly meetings are going to be enough. It's going to be voluntary, possibly for students to come. You may not have students in the room who want to be there because either of perceptions or misunderstandings or whatever. So I really think that's going to need to be fleshed out. So I would hope that monthly is a target, but not a limit, if we can see it more frequently. I think that's going to be key to that. Personally, as a board member, I'm going to need to see at the end of the year a systemic effort to reach as many students as possible, because that's, I think that's the only way we're going to, we're going to get to a better understanding of what the role of SRO should be, and having student feedback that really reflects an authentic experience.
So at this point, if there are no more comments, yes.
I have one more comment. I do support Chair, Director Amundson's idea about having a task force, that that was something that I was thinking about as well.
Ditto.
I guess the one thing that I believe with the challenge for the Rochester Police Department is to include in this document, and Chief Franklin, you talked about the importance of the relationships, but incorporate in this document why that's important to you, articulate for the students, and maybe it's an assembly at the school, or some other recorded message, or some other way to get the message to the students. But I think that's a key element here of building that relationship, because it reflects on our world today, that that's what's important. That needs to be conveyed in this document and in any other possible way that you can figure out to do that.
Mr. Barlow.
Before this is moved to action, the MOU that's before us is what we will, in a moment, vote to either approve or not. And I think the work group, Chief Franklin, Superintendent Pecel have heard the concerns that they will have opportunity to work at addressing, and we need not necessarily try to change the agreement at this time. Both of these are key leaders of their organizations, and especially with Superintendent Pecel, he has seven people that will kind of be making sure that action is occurring on the concerns that have been voiced. And so I'd like to move this to action.
Thank you. I'll second moving it to action. Any discussion? Dr. Pecel.
Madam Chair, just so that this idea of a task force doesn't fall off, we have a very, I think, important study session on the 24th that's all focused on board process, strategic plan. I would suggest we add this item to that meeting, not to talk about so much the kind of, but to follow up on this idea, because I heard what you were saying, and I think this was a good process that wasn't entirely aligned with some things you were looking for. And so I would suggest we add that to our study session, to have that process discussion about it, separate from the decision you all will be making now on the MOU.
Chair Marvin, I had one more thing to, you go first.
Can I respond to that? Like, if we're already on a big agenda, can we maybe schedule another?
Yeah, we'll look at the calendar.
Okay.
And I just wanted to respond that I saw it both as a process and a reimagining, both.
Correct.
That I think we made more progress here in terms of process, and perhaps not as much as the reimagining, that we still have the intent to do.
So right now, the discussion is moving to action. It's been moved to action and seconded. Any other discussion?
About moving it to action.
Yes. Okay, all in favor of moving this to action, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's not an action item. It resolved, the School Board of Independence School District 535 approves memorandum of understanding as a supplement to the School Resource Officer Services Agreement for the term of July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
And moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Six aye, one nay. The motion passes. Thank you. And thank you so much, Scott and Chief Sheridan.
Thank you as well.
Chief Sheridan. Chief Franklin, congratulations, Scott. 7.02, Safe and Open Schools Plan, this is an information item. Dr. Pecel.
Directors of the Board, Madam Chair, this is a part of our continuing conversation about how we help our youngest learners, and our oldest learners now, remain safe during this pandemic. As you know, this has been an issue since I got here, and the intent of this discussion here tonight is twofold. You have before you a recommendation to change the policy that you voted for fairly recently regarding face coverings, but you also have an initial overview of our larger plan for keeping our schools both safe and open. That first item is, at least in my recommendation, one for action and for decision, as we now are essentially open in the school year. The second is for feedback and for input, which we value greatly. The process, which we are necessarily on a tight timeline, because of course, recommendations and new data has been coming out continually, going forward from tonight will look something like this. We are going to get some feedback from you shortly, and we hope some action on that policy 808 face covering issue tonight. We will, based on your feedback, revise the draft plan that I shared with you in writing for this meeting. We will be sending that out on Wednesday through a survey to school, community stakeholders to get their feedback, not on the policy that you'd be making a decision on tonight running face coverings, but on all the other aspects of the plan. We will be holding meetings with key RPS staff on this larger plan for the remainder of this week. The survey would close on Monday. We'll integrate the feedback from that survey, and I'm sure further refine some of the feedback we get from you and from key staff groups, such as our COVID coordinators in all of our schools. And then we will release a final version of our Safe and Open Schools Plan on Thursday, August 26th. So we're on a tight timeline here, but we know that the start of school is upon us. To take a step back behind why I recommended, and as many of you know, it was my strong hope to avoid needing to recommend that we have face coverings for students who are old enough to be vaccinated, and staff who are old enough to be vaccinated, and that recommendation has changed. And it's changed through looking at the same evidence many of you have been looking at and talking to a lot of the experts. And as you all know, I like to cite research in these things, and so I'm going to inflict just a little bit of it on some of you right now. And the first is actually just to underscore why we must keep our schools open. And we heard a little bit about that from one of our comments to the board visitors tonight. Megan Coffield, who's a researcher who does really important work on analyzing test score data, has conducted analysis that suggests a catastrophic negative impact on student learning and reading and math as measured by tests. Rebecca Lieb and her colleagues in 2020 highlighted how emergency room visits for mental health-related issues among 12 to 17-year-olds increased by 31% during the worst of the pandemic compared to 2019. Angela Duckworth and some colleagues released new analysis in 2021 of high school students that showed that when you control for demographics and a wide range of other factors, students reported lower social, emotional, academic outcomes when they were virtual than they were in school. We must keep our schools open, and that is the bottom-line imperative. We thought we were going to be able to do that with vaccination alone. And vaccination, as you all know, remains our single best tool in this effort, and yet with the spread of the Delta variant, it appears necessary but insufficient. We know from increasing evidence from the CDC and other sources that the Delta variant of the COVID-19 virus is twice as contagious as the original virus that sent us into lockdown for the previous year. And very importantly, for this board's consideration tonight, we know that whilst children are less likely to get it than adults, we now know they can get it. In fact, the CDC said in no uncertain terms, quote, "Children are at risk for severe COVID-19." In addition, we are beginning to see the long-term impacts of what happens when kids do get COVID-19. We're seeing multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children that has continuing impacts, and a top academic journal Nature reported that several studies have now shown that young children can experience what is called long COVID, with headache, fatigue, heart palpitations, even though those kids experience that at much lower rates than the adults. Here in Minnesota, last week, Health Commissioner Jan Malcolm said that 18% of our new COVID cases are between 0 and 19 years of age. She also reported that cases among children nine and younger have almost doubled in the last two months to now just under 10% of infections. Olmsted County has now moved into the highest level of community transmission. We're in the red zone, and that has always been an area that we've been looking. So there's got to be a sense of urgency about this decision. We know that our youngest learners, ages 2 to 12, still cannot be masked or not, still cannot be vaccinated. We know that breakthrough infections can happen even among the vaccinated, and we know that the vaccinated unfortunately can spread the virus. So why masks? Why do we come back to a recommendation around masks? Contrary to what we have sometimes heard, and what frankly, many of us feel, I didn't love putting this on recently either, masks work. The National Academy of Science, Proceedings of the National Academy of Science, and these are scientific entities where your career is made if you get published in them, and your career is destroyed if your data is proven to be false. And so this is not just a few people sitting around with armchair analysis. The Proceedings of the National Academy of Science synthesized research from leading researchers around the world on masks, and they said, quote, "The preponderance of evidence indicates that mask-wearing reduces transmissibility per contact by reducing transmission of infected respiratory particles in both laboratory and clinical contexts. Public mask-wearing is most effective at reducing spread of the virus when compliance is high." And members of the board, you also received, as did I, a really wonderful letter from 102, I counted them, physicians here in Rochester, who had lots of other things to say, but this sentence jumped out at me, quote, "There is no science that supports claims of adverse outcomes for mask-wearing by healthy children." And finally, some researchers at Duke University conducted a very rigorous study of large dataset in 14 states, particularly North Carolina, and found that mask-wearing reduced transmission even when kids were not practicing social distancing, which we're not proposing that they do. So vaccines aren't the sole solution, masks aren't the sole solution, social distancing isn't the sole solution, it's a series of these steps. Very briefly, because board members and the public have had a chance to read the larger Safe and Open Schools Plan, which is draft, there are 13 key components to it, and I'll just tick them off very briefly. The first is what is before you as a policy proposal tonight regarding face coverings for students and staff. The second is an effort to voluntarily verify the vaccine status of our staff and our students. It's likely that we can access the student data through a county registry for staff. We'll have to ask, it will be voluntary. What that could allow us to do is begin to have a much more differentiated strategy, as we don't have to look just at the COVID spread rates in the county as a whole, but we can look at Rochester Public Schools in particular, and potentially even individual schools, where we can see what vaccination rates look like in those schools. The third component of the plan is we will continue to conduct vaccination clinics with Olmsted County. The fourth is that we will maintain social distancing. At right, at present, our plan is three feet or more. I've gotten a lot of letters, I'm sure you have, from some teachers saying, can't we go less, shouldn't we go more? But we'll continue to get feedback on that over the next week as we finalize the plan. The next several steps are actually designed to lean into that vision of keeping our schools as open as they can be. We are proposing that we will welcome visitors back into our schools who are not once-in-a-wild drop-ins, but who are tutoring or providing services on a regular basis, so we can actually, we know who they are, and they are engaged in our schools on an ongoing basis. We'll operate extracurricular activities, operate field trips, with the exception of no overnight field trips at this time, and we'll operate group gatherings. One remaining question is, should we limit the number of either students or staff who can be in a group gathering? And that's something that we're looking at. Initially, in the plan, I proposed to leave that, or suggested I would like to leave that to individual buildings and departments. We've gotten some feedback over the last couple of days that suggests we may need to be a bit more forward-leaning in saying X number of kids, X number of staff. The theory of letting people decide for themselves is it all depends on how many people and what the size of the room is and what the ventilation is, but we're getting the sense that that may be too much flexibility, and people may want a clearer standard. We previously constrained where substitute teachers could teach. We'd be opening that up now to the full district. They could work in multiple schools. We'll maintain the work we did on sanitation and ventilation last year. We have done a ton, and yet it's really important to remain vigilant on that front. We just received yesterday new guidance from the Minnesota Department of Education on testing procedures, and we're just looking at that. And so we'll continue to lean into an aggressive testing regime so that we can find out where there is COVID, if there is, in our schools and programs. And then we are very actively working on the quarantine process, which is quite complex. There's some guidance from the CDC that says if people are vaccinated, there's not a need to quarantine, so that's something we're looking at. The critical issue is how are we going to provide instruction to students who are in quarantine when they need to be there? So that's something that we have got folks working on, both in terms of general education and special education. So there will be quarantine guidance by the point where we would release this broader plan as well. And then finally, we'll continue to listen to the same set of experts every once in a while when I get emails about this. People say, well, where are you getting this information? People say, well, where are you getting this information? And so we tried to name them. It's the Centers for Disease Control, the Minnesota Department of Health, the Olmsted County Public Health Department, and the Minnesota Department of Education, along with the Mayo Clinic through the COVID advisory group that we've had for the last couple of years. So that's the broader update. We welcome your thoughts about the components of the broader plan as part of the larger input that we'll be getting over the next week and a half. And I recommend that you take action on the face covering issue tonight as a matter of board policy. Thank you.
Question, Dr. Pecal. And I don't know if they're, well, let me ask this first. Board members have comments or questions?
I do have one question.
Okay, well, so here's my thing then. Would you prefer that we wait and have the mask discussion when we're talking about the mask policy?
I defer to the board, however you think it's best to. I felt it was best to talk about them together because the whole point is it's a package.
Absolutely. Okay, but I'm just thinking if we're going to be talking about that again. Anyway, Ms. McLaughlin.
I just have one question about the vaccination clinics. I was interested to hear when the CDC made their last recommendations on April 5th, that they actually encouraged school districts to promote vaccinations. And we're talking about in the, in the draft here of vaccination clinics for students and staff. I was thinking along the lines of could we include something like our neighborhood schools could be neighborhood vaccination centers in, in reflection of the media reports that I've read. There are some people that oppose the vaccine philosophy, but there are also people that don't have access to it. So if we can give them access in their neighborhoods here locally, I think that may, and I'm thinking particularly of parents. If we can get more parents vaccinated, I think the better off our students will be. So I would encourage us to include a broader definition of vaccination clinics.
I love that and we'll, we will pursue that. That's a, that's a nice enhancement and we'll pursue that with the colleagues at Olmsted County. Just to be really clear, they run the clinic, we house the clinic, we, we partner, but I think that's a great idea. I think it may have happened somewhat without a lot of outreach in previously. We think most of our focus will be on middle school initially, but that's a great idea to really try and make them centers for broader, broader.
I just want people to have that access if they haven't had it already, that this would, you know, if they're coming to school anyway to pick up their kid, they can get their vaccination and be done.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Pecal. You left us almost speechless. We'll move on to 8.01. 8.01, and this is a real crowd pleaser. Student Nutrition Services Acceptance of Bid for Paper Products. This is a briefing item with Dr. Pecal.
Madam Chair, this is an item that is, is on the agenda separately simply because we were given the advice to hold off on this set of purchases because we were going to get a better price and we did, and we did. And so we're bringing it to you now for approval.
Awesome. Oh, so no discussion needed?
I don't think so, unless board members have questions. This is fairly straightforward and it's one of those that I think in future we may want to include on a consent agenda, but tonight for, as a matter of process, it's here for your decision.
All right. Do we have someone who wants to move this to action?
I will.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you. All in favor of moving this to action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby accept the bid from Trio Supply Company of Minneapolis, Minnesota, in the estimated amount of $230,490.30. That's an estimate, for the purchase of paper products for the Student Nutrition Services Department for the 2021-2022 school year.
Have approval? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. 8.02, approval of the 2020-2021 budget adjustments as of June 30th, 2021. This is a briefing item. Dr. Pecal.
Board members, I'd like to call John Carlson, our Executive Director of Business and Finance and all things financial, to give, give the board an update on this.
Thank you, Chair Marvin, Superintendent Pecal, and board members. Hopefully Kurt will put this up on the screen here in just a second, but really this is a straightforward budget adjustment process. We have not typically done this for the fourth quarter. It is something that our auditors are asking us to do. Kurt, could you move it to the next one because I forgot the clicker? Thank you. As, as I said, this is a best practice. What's, what's happening here is after we approve the March budget adjustments, things keep happening in April, May, and June. We keep receiving grants and donations and we keep adjusting the budget to reflect those. But when our auditors get here in September, then they, they say, well, your budget in your books doesn't quite match what the last budget was that you gave to the school board. So they said you could probably just bring this forward to your board sometime in the summer and just have them do a final approval on the final budget numbers and then that's what they'll audit again. So that's what we're here to do tonight. Bergen KDV is our auditor. They are going to be looking at the books in September. They'll be here for a couple of weeks and then they'll bring you a final report on November 16th that matches the budget numbers that we approve here. Kurt, if you could move to the next one. So what we're asking for is to accept $2.1 million more in revenue and $2.4 million in expenditures. So you're probably wondering, why are you doing slightly more on the expenditure? So Kurt, you could move one more. I will tell you why. We have COVID funding in there. That was the biggest thing from federal grants that we received, other grants and donations from other sources, as well as two other large items. One was the spring semester PSEO courses, so we brought that through for your approval, but we were out of budget in that code when we went to pay the actual bill. So we just want to kind of increase the budget to account for that. And then the last one is we were finally able to negotiate a settlement there with the insurance company on the Bamber Valley tornado claim from 2018. So that roof needed to be replaced this summer and part of it is being paid for by insurance. So that's in there as both a revenue and an expense to prove. Everything is detailed out in a separate attachment. I'm not going to go through them all here on the screen, but if you have any further questions, I could answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Carlson?
Should we move to action?
Yes.
Move to action.
Second.
Good. It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 approved the 2020-2021 budget adjustments through June 30th, 2021 as presented.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. 8.03, referendum projects update. This is an information item. Dr. Pecal.
Board members, I'd like to ask Scott Sheridan to come, our Executive Director of Operations. I will just say, as you see that slide, John and Scott in our meeting earlier today were, John is feeling a little outdone by Scott's PowerPoint slides because John's were just bullet points about money and we're now going to see a few pictures of the very good work that's happening around referendum construction. And as I often say, I've been really stunned and pleased by the efficiency with which this complex, complex project, process has been managed. So looking forward to giving you an update with a particular emphasis on pools.
Thank you, Superintendent. Credit for the photo goes to Dana. This is Dana Liebcheck from WSN. He's the lead architect on the pool project and I think you recognize the person on my left, your good friend Keon McWaters from Knutson Construction. This is the 21st update, referendum update, and we, we are at a point right now with the Century Pool, which is our last remaining project where we're expecting bids to come back. And so we felt it was important that we provide you an update of where we're at with it and Dana can do a great job of that. And then we also, just so you're aware, we started construction on that pool yesterday, breaking ground with it at Century. So I'll turn it over to you, Dana. You want to go first, Dana?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott. Scott mentioned my name is Dana Liebcheck. I'm an architect with Woodset Architects and Engineers. It's nice to finally meet you in person versus doing it virtually. I'm just going to run through this real quick and give you an update on where we're at and where we've been and where we're going to go. There's our team. I think you've seen that before. Oh yeah. There's where we are, Century High School. As Scott just mentioned, we're starting excavation. The project is actually, was, was released in two different bid packages. I'll get to that in one second. Last time I was in front of you was Tuesday, March 16th, and this was a presentation of the eight-lane stretch pool. If you remember, we started with an eight-lane, standard eight-lane competitive pool and then we evolved that to an eight-lane stretch on March 16th. Construction documents started with that, that phase of the project on March 18th. Starting at that time, or continuing at that time, we had weekly meetings with our RPS staffs. Scott Sheridan and his team were included in that. Starting in April, on April 8th, we then included the, the coaches in the community, within the swim community. Also within our RPS team, we included Mark Weasley, who is the Athletic Director of Fourth Century High School. So he was engaged in this process from the very beginning. So weekly meetings with our coaches began on April 8th and that continued until July 29th. So we engaged the swim community, the male coaches, century coaches, the adaptive league coaches, those who are engaged on a weekly basis throughout the design process and construction document process. We crossed a major hurdle in the last two months. On July 2nd, we released our bid package number one. Bid package number one included the civil design, the demolition, architectural demolition of the building, components of the building, sorry, as well as the structural precast. We had to release this package early so we could time the delivery of the structural precast to the erection of the precast over winter break. Right, Ken? Close to it, yeah, right. The delivery times for different materials is, is becoming a challenge on any construction project today. That, that package is now under construction. We're just in the process of working through the city, through the, through the SDP approval, but we have started demolition and we're starting to move dirt on site, which is very exciting. The second, oh, and then that, that package actually bid on July 28th and we're moving ahead with those selected contractors, subcontractors. The second bid package was released for bidding on, we completed the drawings on August 10th and those, those bids will be due on August 31st. And that will include the remainder of the project, which is a structural concrete, interiors, interior finishes, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, as well as the pool design itself. And we just had our actual, we had our pre-bid meeting today at Century High School and had a couple of good subcontractors show up, so we're excited for that phase. So this, we crossed a big hurdle here last week when we finished that, on August 10th, when we finished that second bid package and we're now into the bidding process. And so our next big hurdle then would be the, the completion of the bids on, on August 31st. This is, this is where we're at and nothing has changed since the last time I presented this to you, I believe. This is exactly what we showed you in the past, something that's some small changes with some, with some glass and some glazing and some colors and things like that, but really the scope and the, the size of the building, the materials have remained consistent. This floor plan is very similar to what I've shown you back in March. There's very small changes since that time. We had to move some mechanical rooms around, but you can see on the upper right-hand corner that red box, that's our storm shelter, which we've discussed in the past. The nadatorium is on the left side with the diving well and the eight-lane stretch in the center. And please stop if you have any questions, stop me. This is the spectator seating and what we show on there is 336 seats. Now that's in the base bid. I think it's important to point out that in the alternate bid, we would be adding seating on the north and the south ends of the nadatorium, which would bring us up to 411 total seats. But the base bid is at 336. And this is, I just want to include this on here so that you can get kind of a scale of what we're, what we're doing. On the left side, you'll see is the, the nadatorium with the pitch ceiling, the pool obviously, the nadatorium seating, and then the, the locker rooms and the storm shelters on the right-hand side. And that, that box on top of the locker room, that is the actual size of the mechanical equipment needed to feed that nadatorium. So you can see the scale of that one piece of equipment or a couple pieces of equipment. I'm sorry, did you have any questions regarding the design or bidding process where we're at today?
Ms. Nathan.
So I know we had a long conversation about all the features that we were, that we were able to have in the pool. And the last time we talked about the budget, I'm looking at the numbers from the last, it looks like we're at an estimate of 15, I don't know which number to use, the $15,414.32 or the $15,469.160?
We used the $15,469 and that's been adjusted based on the bid package.
Okay. So we were clearly able to include more features than we did at the very beginning of this process because the, the budget has increased to 15 million. And we've had conversations, you've had conversations, board members have had conversations with the community. Are you all confident that we have the pool that our swim teams and our facilities, our adapted facilities need, based on all the conversations and work you've done?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, the, the wishlist for every project is always greater than any budget can afford. So there are items that we've had to compromise and, and value engineer from the project and, and I think you're aware, one of them was the precast bleachers, I think. Is that what you're maybe referring to?
Might be, yeah, it might be one of them, right.
Yeah, and that, that was a product or a, a part of this project that of course we wanted to include. And just to give you a little bit of background on that, some of the pools that we looked at, one of them being Sibley, and I think we showed these pictures to you in the past, that had a precast concrete stadia assembly. And it's, it's a great product and it, it's, it's long-lasting and, but when we looked at that against our budget, putting 400 seats in a precast stadium, we, put us over about $300,000. Or that was the cost, estimated cost of the precast assembly was $300,000. So we had to take a serious look at that and say, you know, what, what's more important at this time? You know, what, what can we take out or add to get that in? And when, when we hit our 411 seats, we found that as a real, that was one of our goals, was to get 400 seats in there. So we were proud of that. We added a, another, I guess you'd call like a crow's nest for our coaches or our, our timing, our meat coordinators for them to overlook the pool. We added that into the project, so that was an add. We added deck showers to the project, which weren't in the original design. We added those to accommodate our diving coaches. I can't think we added, oh, I'm sorry, we expanded the, the pool storage as well because we knew there was a, a demand for all kinds, everything from floaties to pool noodles and hose reels and everything you can imagine for multiple teams and ages. We added some storage underneath the stadium seating, underneath the bleacher seating to accommodate some of those, those needs and wants for the project. But, but when we tried to say, okay, now let's have precast, well, no, we're adding $300,000 to the project and we're, we're maxed out where we're at right now. So much as we'd love to redesign and put that in, that, we determined that back in May, June, I can't remember. It was early in the design process when we really took a close look at this and said, okay, now we need to stop and decide, we're going to go ahead with precast or we're going to go ahead with aluminum bleachers. And that was, that was the time where we really had to say, you know, we don't have the money for that. We really had to say, we don't have the money for precast. And so we went ahead with the aluminum bleacher system. Our team has taken it upon ourselves to make sure that aluminum bleacher system is, is a good system. I mean, it's, I was just visiting with the representative today and, and he identified that as a 30- or 40-year product, 30 to 40 years for that aluminum system. All this, we need steel underneath that bleacher system to support the bleachers. Well, that's, all that steel and everything is, that's there is, was called hot dip galvanized. So it's, it's, it's a process of coating all the steel and the bolts and all the connections. There's no welded connections underneath there. It's all bolted and it's all galvanized, hot dip galvanized. And we do that because we're in a corrosive environment. The bleachers are completely, I don't want to say they're sealed, that, you can't seal aluminum bleachers, but they're, they're vertical risers and then of course the treads with very small butt joints. There's a gutter system within that bleacher system which captures any moisture, any water, because they have to wash down the bleachers about once a year, just get, get the chlorine off of it really. And so during that washdown process, there's gutters within the aluminum bleacher system to capture that water and put it into a drain. So we've gone, gone through that process and we've looked, yeah, how do we put these aluminum bleachers into a corrosive pool environment and make sure it lasts? And that, so we've, we've taken those steps to do that. But that was a hard, that was a hard decision and it came up in, I would say, April or May, and then it came up again in July because we really had to research this and make sure we were making the right decision for the swim community and, and for your pool. I mean, this is your, this is your product. We're putting it in for you.
So tell me how the alternative bid then works for those 411 seats? Is that included in the budget or how does that work?
Well, I'll use the laser here. Well, I'll use the laser here. Okay, I guess I can't do that. The areas, I guess it's hard to to show on what we have here for graphic, but on the north and the south ends of that stadium seating, there are sections, one section has 39 seats, the section on the south has 36 seats. And hopefully I have my math right on that. And and so those sections, actually what we're doing is we're building a concrete platform. So the stadium seating that we're providing, the bleacher, the aluminum bleacher system is, like I said, it's suspended on these steel components underneath the bleacher system. When we get on the alternate ends, on the ends, we put a concrete platform on both ends. So that concrete platform, it's just going to be a concrete platform if we don't accept the alternate. And so you could come in, you can put concessions up there, I don't, I don't, speaking beyond what we talked about, I guess, so I can't promise anything, but maybe you could put a small band up there, I don't, you could do anything you want. It's it's available space that that we can use, you can put storage up there. And then later on, you can come in, you could come in later and we could add the bleachers on the ends to accommodate additional seating. If if we decide that we that we need those 411 seats, you can add those seats immediately if you want to do. So we've accommodated to easily add those in the future. But right now, it was, that was one of the easy, low-hanging fruit anyway, where we could identify an alternate to reduce some costs of the project we had to. We're seeing everything is coming in over budget. This is no surprise to anybody in this room. Every, everything we're going to put in this building is a little higher than it was a year ago. We're trying to combat that.
Cost of those additional seats though are not in this budget.
Other questions, board members?
Can I ask one more question? Sorry.
Yeah. So. I didn't, are you done with the presentation? I didn't mean to cut you off there.
No, that's all, I think you want to talk about budget numbers.
Yeah, well, that was going to be my next question is to talk about budget.
So, real quick, the four schools, those are unchanged from our previous update that Scott had done. The century pool number has been updated based on bid package one, like I had previously mentioned. So we're targeting 15,469,000 and that does still include about 330,000 of estimating contingency that we would then reduce to zero once those bids come back. The other number that has been updated is the auditorium referendum projects. We were previously holding 2.06 million for rough numbers sake and it needed to be increased to 2.2 million based on the actual end costs of that project. So putting us at an overall referendum amount of about negative 1.6 million for the total. Secure entries are complete. The emergency notification projects, half of them are wrapping up now and then half of them will still be completed next year. So we are still holding contingencies in that project as well as pretty much all of the ongoing new school projects. Questions on budget?
So I guess it would be remiss of me not to ask, since our referendum dollars were 180.9 and we have that 1.6 million variance, where do those dollars come from? I'm not looking at Ken.
Here comes the saving.
They've been sitting in savings accounts and different bond investments, so they are going to earn some interest. And we're projecting that it's going to be a little bit more than what the variance is there. So I feel overall comfortable right now if there's no major problems with construction contingencies that we should be able to cover that.
And I would like to point out that for the middle school decommissioning, we were holding about a million dollars budget for that. But all that would do is decommission those three pools at the middle school and it doesn't include any fit up, which means we take the water out, we decommission the pool, we fill it with sand and concrete or whatever, and that's what you get. It doesn't include walls, it doesn't include anything else that, depending on how, what the use of that space is determined to be, there isn't a budget for that right now.
Thank you for the presentation. And let me just say thank you so much for the work that you're doing. I know that things keep changing as with any project this huge and you've been dealing with all kinds of unexpecteds and contingencies and you've been flexible and the expertise you bring to this project is really appreciated. So thank, thank all of you.
Thank you.
8.04 stipends for short positions, shortage positions to strengthen recruitment. This is a briefing item. Dr. Pecal.
Chair Marvin, board members, I would like to bring Carl Bakken up to give you an overview of something that we've talked a bit about previously. In this labor market, a lot of talented people have a lot of options. And so we, while being prudent with district finances, are going to need to and are eager to start to get somewhat more creative in trying to recruit and retain employees. Over time, a lot more creative with doing that. So this is an interim step. I've really appreciated the work that Carl has done on this effort. And I'll just say this, like many things in our work, I think somewhat like the discussion we had about SROs, how are we going to evaluate it? Somewhat like the discussion we're about to have about discipline, how are we going to evaluate it? This is yet another area, but it's not about students, it's about our staff. How are we going to evaluate it? How are we going to actually see if what Carl's going to tell you about is effective? And as you know, I think that we can bring that kind of an emphasis on measuring how we're doing and continually trying to improve to all of our work. And this is an area that I think should, where we should do the same. So Carl.
Good evening, board members. I'll try to talk through the mess here the best I can. So as a resolution in front of you states, we're facing hiring challenges, I'd say unprecedented hiring challenges this year has been more challenging than any other year for many other districts and other businesses across the country. We have people who've left jobs at the highest rate. We have a very low unemployment rate. Because of that, we're bringing an idea forward to pay a hiring incentive, and this would be a one-year only, it would actually be between now and mid-December. And it would be for our paraprofessional unit. We've been talking with the paraprofessional union lead about this for about two months. We sent a general draft and said, please take a look at this, give us some feedback. The original that we sent forward was only for new employees and what was brought back is, please think about our returning employees who are coming back after a very difficult year and coming back to another challenging year. And we brought it back to cabinet, had discussions and decided to provide something to our returning employees as well to show how we value them and recognize the work they do. So in in front of you, we're we're proposing that we would hire, upon hire, new employees would receive a $500 stipend. After 90 working days, they would receive an additional $1,000. And then our staff who returned, who were with us last year and return to work this fall would receive $500, split into two payments.
Questions or comments?
You go. You go first. Dr. Garcia. Of course, I appreciate the opportunity to compensate those who do the work for sure, but I guess I'm also thinking in longer term than this. So instead of just a one-year, are there discussions about how this would translate into more appropriate compensation for them long-term?
That's a great question. When we come back, we would be, we are working on our 21-23 contracts right now, which are teachers that we're actively negotiating with and we still need to negotiate with our principals. The 22-24 contract would be a paraprofessional contract and that would be a discussion that we, one of the things we would do is come to you and get parameters for that next two year agreement.
Okay. And I guess my other question is, I imagine this is what you agreed upon, but what was their original ask when you went to them? Does this fall short of the thing that they're asking for?
We originally proposed the 1,000, I mean, 500 initial hire, 1,090 days, but only new employees and they, one of the, one of the discussions was, we'd like the same for our current employees. And we looked at the price tag of that and decided we would do a 500 and that's where we landed and they accepted and have signed the memorandum of agreement at this time.
Dr. Pecal.
Dr. Garcia, it's a, it's a great question. I would say I would not see this effort in any way prejudging what we would seek to do on an ongoing basis through contract negotiations, it's trying to respond to the moment. And without naming them, because the conversations are ongoing, we have proposed this to a number of other representatives of other employee groups that we have serious shortages of as well. So we have one group that's agreed to it and we've proposed it and those are ongoing conversations and, but we, we, I don't see this at all as a long-term strategy. It's trying to actually deal with the challenges of the moment. We will not get to those negotiations while, if I'm here in 2022, and say, well, gee, we gave you that bump a year ago. Like this is a, this is a challenge of the moment and those will be separate contract negotiations that we'll be having with the union down the road.
Other questions or comments? Right, this is a briefing item. Moved to action. Thank you. Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to bring this to action. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. It's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the memorandum of agreement to provide $1,500 incentive pay for newly hired paraprofessionals and 500 to paraprofessionals who maintain their employment from the 2020-2021 school year into the 2021-2022 school year, who meet conditions in the memorandum of agreement.
Who approve them?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Bakken. 9.01, discussion continuation of Minnesota Department of Human Rights and Discipline Data. This is an information item. Dr. Pecal.
Thank you, Chair Marvin, board members. As you will remember, we had a, I think, very good discussion that, for which we ran out of time as we were trying to get to a community event around the discipline disparities that exist in our district along lines of race, to a lesser but still significant extent, socioeconomic status. So I would like to ask Jackie Peterson, our executive director of elementary and secondary education, to rejoin us. Chris Lingan, who's our director of secondary education, and Will Ruffin, our executive director of diversity, equity and inclusion. As you'll remember, Jackie, Chris and Will were there and gave both presentations and discussions at our last conversation. And we decided to table some of the time that we wanted. I know board members wanted to devote to further conversation and questions. And so we're returning to that. We don't have an updated presentation for you, we want to revisit your questions. I'll just say briefly at the outset, it's a point I made last time, that I think it's important when you begin these discussions of discipline disparities. I'm not speaking about Rochester Public Schools, but I would be surprised if our district were the exception to most all the other places where this has been studied. We do know that at significant rates, students of color are disciplined more harshly for the same infractions that white kids are disciplined for. And so it's not a disparity just in the numbers, it's a disparity in the consequences. That is not true of every instance of discipline of every school, but it's important to state that at the outset, that we know. There was one recent study, last research study I'll mention tonight, I promise, where they asked teachers to say how they would, administrators and teachers, how they would discipline some fictitious students that were described in scenarios. And when the names were identifiably more traditionally African-American than more traditionally white, the kids were given significantly sterner consequences in the hypothetical scenarios that people were responding to. And so those are the kind of things that are a reality that we're committed to work around and want to thank the three colleagues who are here for the work. And we return to your questions or observations, which will inform our work going forward.
Great. Comments or questions? Ms. Amundson.
I've got a bunch, should I?
Just start with one, start with one, that'll be good.
All right. I don't know how you want. So I'm trying to reset my brain to the last meeting and Ms. Peterson, you were clearly in better shape than you are now. So I wanted to first compliment the whole team on, on your continuing work and say how impressed I was with the behavior for learning team and the process that everybody is going through. You referenced talking to people about what worked for them and including all buildings in that conversation so that each one could learn from what the others were doing. And I think that's a, that's a great way to, to do the process and the efforts. I think it needs to be said, and and one of our speakers tonight referenced it, just because the agreement is over, the, the attention and the efforts will continue. And I just think that's important to state, I think we all know that, but I think it's important to state for the public that just because we've checked the boxes and completed the agreements does not mean that it's no longer important to us. So that's more of a statement than a question. But but the question would be for Dr. Pecal and for staff, what are our plans? How often will we, will we examine the data? And from the board, how often do we want to receive those reports? It's a discussion that I think needs to explicitly happen and it doesn't have to happen right now. But I, I just don't want the the calendar to get away from us. I think we need to move forward with our own agreement now. We don't have an external agreement. We need to have our own agreement.
I think I can, I can speak to that. We, prior to the pandemic, when everything seemed to change, Chris Lingan was going out to meet with every building monthly for a while, it was monthly, I think we maybe were doing quarterly.
Turned it quarterly on.
And the importance of that is taking a look at the building data and examining the trends in the building with the principal, with the leadership team at the building and looking at data that might be of concern to dissect that, what is the reason for that? We could have a teacher who seems to be referring an awful lot and then you find out it's one student who's going through a difficult time. And then we, we talk about, is it appropriate to refer or should we be doing some other sorts of supports? But what we found, and I think we've shared this with board, and you maybe weren't all on the board at the time, but we brought principals before you to talk about the process. Because I think when we have our principals talk about their practice, it personalizes it and it's not numbers, it's, it's kids we're talking about. And they could tell you, and I think you got a sense for, they know their data, they know the kids and they know the whys. And I think when we meet with them and if we don't, if we can't get to that, then we've got a problem. So we want to be there to help examine the data, to make sure it happens and to, and to be keenly aware of what the issues might be.
The question of how often do we look at the data? Prior to this year, it was monthly. I was sent to superintendent and Jack, and Jack Peterson. Just here's a quick snapshot of where we are compared to last month, compared to this month, not compared to this, but here's, here's where we are. I really didn't compare to the report, more to the month-to-month stuff of things. And the question always came up, are we suspending for the right reasons and those things? And that's where the questions that I'd come out for, why was there an increase at this site? And so those are the questions that that I went out to buildings with and had. I don't want to come monthly to present data.
Nope. Nope.
I would suggest that, that beyond the terms of the agreement, the board should look at this data at least annually and ideally biannually. We have a very important, exciting upcoming committee meeting around a board strategic calendar to help chart a strategic map for the issues you will consider. And so this needs to fit in there in a meaningful way. I think it's at least an annual discussion and the biannual nature of it might give us an opportunity to have a discussion that is both prospective and retrospective. What what's coming ahead and how did we do? What's coming ahead and how did we do? So I think this for sure needs to remain a board-level discussion, and we need to scope it along with the other things that we're going to be looking at.
Ms. Nathan.
And I guess I'd like to provide reassurance to everybody here and the board members that in the equity policy we approved, we do have this spelled out. So we direct the superintendent to develop a process to ensure relevant summary and disaggregated data is continuously and comprehensively collected, reviewed, and analyzed, to identify areas of disproportionality in academic achievement, disciplinary action, special education, and other areas. Report equity data and analyses and the district's progress on the requirements in this policy to the school board on an annual basis and otherwise as requested by the school board. And our responsibility as the board is to review the reports and data on equity and direct the superintendent to implement policy-level action strategies or reallocate resources to address areas of concern. So if we want to specify it as more frequently than annually, we have the vehicle to do that in the equity policy.
So then when would we have that discussion? Now, later, study session? I'm ready now.
I think it would be, yeah, I mean, I think we should dig into the issues that you see now, and then we should come up with, I mean, this needs to fit with, I would say, data on kids' social, emotional experience, their belonging experience, and their achievement outcomes. And so in terms of the calendar going forward, we want to think about how the board gets the whole picture of our student outcomes in a meaningful way. But I think we're ready now to give you a sense. The challenge for me, like the same discussion earlier tonight about the SROs, is I'm personally encountering a lot of this data and what we've been doing along with in a fairly new way. And so I certainly want to join in the discussion. I think even six months from now, I will be able to participate in this conversation along with these folks at a deeper level. But I think, you know, we have time. I do know we also have other issues on the agenda tonight, but we're ready to dig in with you.
My input would be biannually, because a year is a long time for kids. So I would want to hear my fellow board members' opinion on that.
Absolutely, we can have the conversation now, or is this, would it make more sense if we're talking about timing to have that discussion when we talk about the calendar?
We can, yeah.
I mean, I think clearly we all have a lot of comments to make, so I feel like maybe that those comments will drive timing. But then obviously, when we have the calendar, this 100% has to be a priority.
Ms. Workman.
Yeah, I think at this point, just the idea that we're studying, we want to do this twice a year.
Okay, so.
I don't need any more than that right now.
Is that a consensus?
But as long as my fellow board members are good with that.
Maybe calendar people, you can sort of figure that I'm seeing heads nodding, that that's a consensus from the board, twice a year.
Sure.
Okay, good. Other comments, questions? Mr. Barlow.
I tend to think that our study session next Tuesday is the proper place for us to, as I look at the initial potential planning process that Dr. Pecel offered to us during our study session back in July, goals and measures group as a potential grouping, that would be an appropriate time, next Tuesday, to really delve into what it is we are looking for, to what degree we want reporting and/or the disaggregation of information, you know, versus simply, I see what we're doing now, based on the models that have previously existed, we're just reacting to data. And the purpose and goal of strategic action planning is to actually develop a plan where we're planning for the usage of data, which is a completely different conversation. I would much rather have that conversation, which will result, and I think, in substantial change, than to simply try to look at what we have done without necessarily having it tied to a strategic goal. Then final point. It's exciting to me to see and know, and Director Nathan had alluded to, the existence of equity policy. I also see this being with the intentionality of developing a strategic plan, bringing all these loose ends together where it's all tied to the same thing. And so if we can, we're all eager, but if we can allow the process to work its way through, and hopefully I'm not setting Dr. Pecel up for, or pining for a lengthy Tuesday study session, but I think if we can, you know, if you could say, yeah, Don, that's exactly what I had envisioned and what I currently have, my colleagues working to provide, I'm on board, you know? We don't have to necessarily spend a great deal of time tonight going over, well, what about this and what about that? Yeah, I have questions. Who doesn't, you know, in terms of the disparity and how it continues to roll itself out? But if through a strategic plan, we can say, yeah, we have these ongoing issues, but here's the plan. Okay. I did look at our plan, what's called the plan, what's called the Rochester Public Schools Plan to Address Disparities. I looked at that and saw the five areas, restorative practices, positive school climate, professional development, instructional practices, behavior interventions, program monitoring, student-family-staff-community engagement. Wonderful stuff. Okay. And so I guess I'm just wanting to see it tied to a strategic plan.
Director Garcia.
Yeah, so just to kind of go back to the presentation, I appreciated, you know, obviously, the presentation of the data. I think one of the things that I would hope for us as a district is that while I can appreciate and acknowledge, or appreciate the acknowledgement of the limitations or confounding variables, like, we still need to use language in which we are accountable to ourselves, rather than trying to kind of suggest that, well, the data may be conflated. We need to be responsive to the fact that it is, the numbers are what they are, or we need to learn how to ask the numbers to show us the data that we're actually asking for. And I think one of the things that didn't really come across in the district data, which actually should be highlighted, because this is the thing we're in trouble for, which is not so much the difference between, like, a racial or ethnic group from last year to this year academically, but how the students in an entirety of a group, there is a disparity there. So in the 2019-2020 data, I just wanted to be explicit that even though, at that time, our student population was 57.8% white, they were 32.9% of the referrals for discipline. Whereas grouping all of the non-white students together, they're only 42.2% of our population, but they were over 67% of our disciplinary referrals. And for last year, it changed a little bit, in which our white students made up just over 56% of our total population and were 40, just over 40% of the referrals, whereas the whole, the entirety of the non-white student population was 43.5%, but they made up almost 60% of our disciplinary data. And so I want us to be able to have those conversations and just acknowledge that. And, you know, we were dinged by OCR for a reason. And just kind of lasting comments, like, I've noticed that we like to emphasize what a small percentage of the student population is represented when we review the data. You know, we pat ourselves on the back a lot for it's less than 2% of our students. And this is where, for me, data from different areas that we're looking at come together, because if that's the case, then I don't understand how that justifies to the majority of people in this room that we're in need of SROs to manage problematic behavior, and that we're spending that money to control something that we keep telling ourselves is only present very infrequently, and that we like to tout, you know, this as a response, when really we're just treating the symptoms rather than the problem itself. And we aren't actively jumping at opportunities to spend money to support the 44% of our student population, which is obviously more than 2%. For our students of color to do things like run an equity audit in our district, or to develop other culturally responsive practices. Because let me tell you something, that when we take care of our minoritized students, which are students of any color, racial or ethnic background, that come from poor working-class families, that are LGBTQ, that have physical or neurological differences or require special education, they're dual or multilanguage learners, if we can focus on helping them and truly incorporate this and look at data from different points, also not just our discipline data, it's going to help all of our students. So while I appreciate the information before us, I really do think it's a drop in the bucket of what we should be analyzing in order to fix this issue. And I also think we need to change some of the language in how we talk about and acknowledge this as an issue, and be very explicit that there are disparities, and that there's something that we have done for, you know, many years that is lending to this problem, and that we also, as the board and the cabinet, need to be fixing the problem within our own structure here, because it's going to trickle down into the rest of the district. So we have people asking, as we mentioned, to have the data available. So while we may take action on it or review it twice a year, I think that that disaggregated data does need to be available to the public, because I think at some point, we want to, we don't want to be shying away from our, the data, or whitewashing, or, you know, trying to reinterpret or water it down, because we want to get to a point where we're proud to show our data because we did the right thing, and we fixed a decades-long issue. So that's my little soapbox.
Let me just thank you for that. Director Garcia, I think it's critically important, what you just said. Here's one question I have. Is there data that, about discipline, about achievement, that the administration gets, and board gets, or maybe only administration gets, that's not released to the public? I mean, I understand we don't name names. But how much of the data that we get about achievement, opportunities, the gaps, is not public?
I would just say that the names is the only thing that, you know, we go through and meet with bill administrators, we go through and go right down the names.
So everybody gets the same numbers that the board gets?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But when I give them the data, I mean, I give them the document, and they can click in, and they can go on the names.
Right.
They can see that Jackie Peterson or Will Ruffin's had this many referrals in that one.
So by person who provided the referral? Is that what you mean? Like, I'm thinking that the numbers that we often talk about are the students, but there are also probably educators and staff.
Certainly, yep.
You know, so if we're identifying, like, the staff member is often referring a student for this particular problem, obviously, a skills assessment needs to be done there.
Yep, and so that, yep, we have those conversations also. And some of the times, we've realized, well, that's the person that's entering the data in, they're just putting their name in there.
Right.
So we've had to have some different ways of going about that. We had 80 of them, always found out that person, just the person that's entering, and they put their name as the referred by. But yes, we track that also.
Okay.
We track that that building, but we don't come to, that's probably one item, we don't come to this, to identify that way, but within the building, we have, yes.
Chair Marvin, I can have a follow-up on that, because I think it's maybe a difference of, we might have the data available to us and sharing what we do, but it's how it's discussed and conveyed. So, for example, one of the questions that I have is that, in your presentation, you talked about the most common offenses for the referrals. And I would like to see that broken down by elementary, middle, and high school, because I want to take a closer look at, you know, those referrals. What's the issue at the elementary school that's causing this data? What's the issue at the middle school? What's the issue at the high school? They might be different issues, and I think that's something important for us to see and the public to see. They might be completely different behavioral issues at those different buildings, and if we need to target ways to help students, I think it would be helpful, at least to me, to know what those issues are, you know, if they're specific to those different age populations.
Yeah, I mean, I have the data right here in front of me with that broken down, but I think we have to also take into consideration, you know, a few of these have two, value of two in there right now.
I'd be fine with, you know, elementary, middle, high school, you know, don't need to get as detailed about each individual school or classroom or whatnot.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Amundson.
So Dr. Pecel maybe isn't aware of the long history of community involvement and input into discipline data, and there's been different iterations of community groups who have been involved in different ways over the years. And another question that I wanted to pose to the board and the staff, maybe not tonight, would be, how, what did we learn from what we have done in the past with community input? And many of the people on the board now were much more involved with that committee than I ever was. I only went to a couple of meetings before I was on the board. But what did we learn? And what is our vision for involving the community going forward? I think that's, just because things don't always work out the way that everybody intended to the first try, or the second try, or the third try, doesn't mean that we stop trying. It means we learn from what did work and didn't work and restructure it so that it does work. And I think, speaking for myself, community involvement is very important in this area. And so I think it might be time for us to examine a reboot of that concept.
Director Garcia.
And just to kind of piggyback off of Director Amundson, I think that that's incredibly important, because I often get communication from community members that no longer respond to the district when we send out surveys, or, you know, we're asking for input because they don't feel heard or have historically not feel heard. So they'll register sort of a private opinion to me, but don't necessarily, that's not reflected in any of the data we specifically are looking at, but I know that it's a datapiece in my own head, because I've obviously had that communication or conversation with that person. And I think if we are more intentional about not us trying to go out and kind of force ourselves upon the public, but to really, truly have that engagement and be responsive, I think that that's going to be absolutely key. But I also want to just point out that so many of them, like, if the community reflects a percentage-wise ethnicity and race of what we have in our schools, and it's about 40% of all of Rochester, like, if all persons of color felt exactly one way about a particular thing regarding discipline, they're still going to get outvoted by the rest of Rochester, because they're only 40-some percent. So we also need to figure out how to better ask questions and how to look at data, not just this percentage versus this percentage, but looking at where there are actually statistically significant differences between groups, within groups, you know, whatever it is that we're looking for. And I think that we don't really do that great of a job as a district with asking of the numbers what we truly want to know of it.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I have a question that kind of takes this discussion into a different direction. So apologize if it seems out of place. The MDH report references the crisis prevention and intervention strategies. I'm curious to know if you can estimate for us how many teachers or staff are in the district who are trained in that process? And then if you could give us your input into, do you see that as useful training? Do you see it being used by teachers and staff when you visit the schools?
I can see my colleague, Carla Bolison, who would have the CPI training data coming up, but I can let her share, and then I can speak to, as a former principal, how useful it was.
So from 2017 to 21, we have just under 1,500 staff that have been trained, and that includes paraprofessionals, general ed teachers, specialty ed teachers, counselors, and social workers, and administration.
As a former principal, I can say that the part of the training that is most useful is the part about how we interact with kids, deescalating situations, how our actions can escalate a situation. And that's the part of the training that is very much emphasized with staff. I think sometimes people think of CPI as the holds that we do, but if you do the deescalation strategy as well, you don't get to the holds. So yes, I think it's very, very valuable.
And I do anticipate that we'll continue with that training. It's been very well received. In 2016, we did the two-hour de-escalation component that Jackie is referring to for all staff. It may be time for us to do that again, but we did that in 2016.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Amundson? Ms. Amundson.
I very much respected what you had to say, Mr. Ruffin. You spoke from the heart and from your experience, and I didn't want it to be lost that you put forward a number of recommendations at the last meeting when you spoke about recruitment of educators of color, about anti-bias training, about increasing our employee resource groups, about restorative practices, about peer conversations. And I think those recommendations and more probably need to be formalized in some way. I'm going to leave it to the superintendent to decide how to pursue those, those very valuable points. But one thing that you mentioned, and it maybe wasn't a formal recommendation, but I was impressed when you were talking about your experience as a teacher and how you would take your lunch hours to sit with children and get to know them. And it occurs to me that, you know, that's not something we can require of our teachers because of their, their contract, and obviously we need to keep our human needs at the forefront and get our rest and nutrition. But what that led me to want to ask to you and to other educators is what else can we do as a board and administration to facilitate those opportunities to think creatively of ways to make space for those interactions for our staff who are very, you know, busy, working hard, don't have a lot of time for anything? And that's another thing that I would like to, I guess, just redirect the spotlight to and move forward with, you know, what can we do to change what we have been doing to, to create space for that? So just another point I wanted to make that really resonated with me from your, your words at the last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Nathan.
So one of the...
Can I just?
Yeah, sure.
Will, you're going to...
Yeah, I was, I can jump in a little bit. First, thank you for grabbing onto that. When I first started in the schools district, it was because I was a volunteer, and Dr. Robert Simmons asked me to come in during lunchtime to spend time with kids. So I've always held that as one of the things that I need to do when I'm in the classroom, is spend time with kids over lunch. But I learned so much about the kids over those conversations. So I think that is something that we can do better at. But one of the strategies that I've seen in the district is when there is a situation happening in the classroom, we do have some things in place where an administrator can come and take over the classroom, where the teacher can then process with the student or at least spend a few minutes with the student. So some of those things are in place right now. Obviously, we can do better, but I like the formal recommendation of spending, the teacher spending time with the student first before any referral or any other thing happens after that. We have to process with the adult and the student.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Workman.
Okay, I was going to just comment on what he said. I think one of the things that I've observed over the years is that it's very easy to add lots of stuff to teachers' plates. And these are wonderful ideas, but then I think we also need to figure out what can we take off their plates, what can we mitigate? Because adding one more thing is going to, it could guarantee that it won't be successful, you know? And so I, I'm sure that teachers would love to buy into this concept, but, you know, there are so many hours in the day, and how do I fit it in? And what is it I can stop doing without doing damage to my students so that I can make room for some of these other, other things? So really, it's a question of how we prioritize what's important, and then how do we make it happen for the people who have to implement those priorities?
Ms. Workman. Ms. Nathan.
So one of the things that I know has been asked by some of our commentators to the board, members of the community I've talked about, is that concern that now that the Minnesota Department of Human Rights reporting is final and the OCR has been over for a few years, what happens with all of those pieces that are in the action steps that we've been reporting on for the past three years? And when the various teams of people who are working on the equity policy over the past few years are writing it, we were looking at the OCR report and the Minnesota Department of Human Rights action steps to make sure that we were codifying those in the equity policy. So just to double-check, I went back and did a crosswalk, and every one of those action steps that we talk about is codified somewhere in our equity policy or in our student handbook or in other practices that have been integrated into what we're doing. Now, the actual implementation, whether it's the program or how it's described in the Minnesota Department of Human Rights report, isn't in the equity policy, but the requirement that we do something in that area, recruiting staff of color, doing the restorative practices, reporting the data to the board. And I think the piece with the equity policy that the board hasn't had the conversation about is we are required to hold the superintendent and the district to completing the requirements of the equity policy. How are we going to do that as a board? Because a lot of what we've talked about here tonight is the kind of information we want to come back to the board, the kind of reporting the board wants on how we're making a difference in these discipline numbers and how we're making a difference in the gap. So that might be a conversation to wrap our heads around the equity policy and that feedback loop that happens. I know that, that staff and administration is working on how they think the equity policy gets activated in their buildings, but the board has to talk about then what, what that whole loop looks like when it comes back to us, and, and we're responsible for the accountability and the oversight of that policy. But for, so for those people who are wondering what happens to that report, that report lives on in the equity policy, and it's our responsibility to, to continue to hold it accountable going forward.
Well, and will become part of the strategic plan, too. I mean, so much of that, that's going to be foundation for a strategic plan. Dr. Pakel, do you have?
Just very briefly, what I've, I've been trying to do is pull up from all the places I usually can find it, and I think it's just yet another casualty of COVID, long-term trend data. Because what we don't have in the two-year trend data that we see, and COVID has been such a dramatic shift, what has been our long-term trend? I mean, these disparities are a gigantic problem that we must address, and the question is, looking over a period of five to seven years, are we making progress in reducing those disparities? I couldn't find that right now. I mean, you know, Chris or Jackie may know that somewhat off the top of your heads, but I also, we're only looking at two years of data here. So I think we do need to bring you long-term trend data for, for sure as part of this, this new approach to measuring our objectives. That's one point. The second, and I appreciated, Director Amundson, that you mentioned Will's ideas that he shared last time, those absolutely will be integrated into the work we're doing, both as we create the DEI function in the district and think about a, I'm using the term strategic action plan to try and differentiate from the strategic plan, but we'll talk about that next week. The one thing I would say very briefly is I think, to oversimplify things, there's two pieces of this puzzle. One is creating safe and equitable schools in which all kids can be their full selves. The second is getting tighter and tighter about what is a disciplinary infraction and what is the consequence for it, and we need both. If we only did the piece of, like, what constitutes a suspension and what's the alternative to suspension, or, then we would be missing the stuff Will talked about. If we only did what Will talked about, and he didn't talk so much about this other stuff because I wanted him to talk about the holistic school vision, we also need to do the, what is suspendable, what is an alternative to suspension, how are we doing across schools? I mean, the very interesting data point to me that jumped out last time was what's been happening at Adams, where it seems that they had a fairly conscious attempt not to suspend. And how did that go? Did administrators and teachers feel that they lost a tool in the toolkit, or did it work? I mean, I'm, you know, I'm sure it's not that simple. So it's a way of just saying, you know, this is absolutely, you know, critical, I share your commitment to it. I think it fits within that larger set of, you know, creating schools which are places where all kids can, you know, be their best selves. And discipline is a piece of that along with these other strategies. So really appreciate the conversation and really appreciate the groundwork that's been laid. And we will, for whatever reason, the state data sets are not really loading the discipline data, but there are some useful tools that we will flag for board members in the future that you can use to actually look at some of that long-term trend data. And it may just be that the state hasn't been loading it for the last couple of years because of Coda, but all of our data is supposed to be there. And so it should be transparent, and a lot of people never know where to find it, but we'll take a look at it.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin.
I just wanted to comment on Director Nathan's comments. I totally agree with you, what you're saying, and learned a lot from what you talked about. It may be helpful to include that in onboarding of newer board members, as I'm a newer board member, to get us up to speed faster on those issues, or even for potential candidates, to make sure that people are joining an organization that has different values of equity and that that's the historical background of where that's coming from. I did also have one more question for the panel, that in your presentation, you talked about the continuing efforts of the district, and you referenced something with the initials CLR. Could you talk about what that is and about how that fits into improving discipline efforts?
Yeah, I think if we can get teachers to be more...
Can you tell us what CLR is first? Okay.
So we have culturally and linguistically responsive teaching. So that's what we kind of go by in the school district. But I think the premise behind it is if we can get our adults, not only teachers, to be more aware of our students, different rings of culture, then they can be better or more understanding of them when they're in the classroom. When we see different behaviors in the classroom, we don't necessarily see them as a negative and see them as something that needs to be disciplined. We see them as just a different behavior that's different than ours, right? So, for example, if I have a young man, and this actually happened to me, so I'll use a personal example. I had a young man that every time during reading time, he would get up and walk around the classroom all the time during reading. Now, I used to do this. I used to tell this young man, I need you to sit down. I need you to sit down and read. This is what I need you to do because this is what you're supposed to do, right? Not taking into, to account that this young man needed to move during this time. He probably had been sitting for a long time, but because his behaviors were different than what I was used to in the classroom setting, that became almost a tension for me, right? But what I had to do was reflect and go, who is this, like, causing harm to? No one. Who is annoyed by this? Only me. Not the students. Him walking around in the classroom didn't bother anyone but myself. So if I'm the problem, then I need to go back and check myself before I send the student to the office because he will not listen to my instructions, right? So if we can get people to understand that, like, there are cultural differences, not even always cultural, just personal differences and personal behaviors that people do and use in the classroom, just because they're different than ours or what we grew up with doesn't mean that they're bad. So this is something that we're also trying to get people to understand. And there's far many more examples. That was just a simple one that I always think about because I used to do the same thing, and I no longer do that, so I know that people can change also and have different outlooks on their students in their classroom.
Thank you.
We, obviously, this is a conversation that needs to continue throughout the school year and throughout the school years. So if we wrap this up now and I have a sense that we sort of need to move on to the next thing, this does not mean that we have all the information we have and asked all the questions we need to ask, but we so appreciate your input, your work, and your willingness to continue the conversation with the board and with the community. So, thank you. And I, I think we'll move to the next thing at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So we will move on now to Policy 808. This is a briefing item, and I'm not sure if this is coming from Dr. Pakel or from the policy committee.
Probably from both.
That would be good.
Dr. Pakel made the recommendation regarding the masking policy change because it currently, because who is required to wear masks currently lives in Policy 808. For the board to change who is required to wear masks, we have to modify Policy 808. So the only, if you're looking at it on Board Docs and you're looking at the change, the major change is to replace any section of the general policy where we specified an age range or specific individuals required to wear a face covering with a statement that all persons are required to wear a face covering. And then it goes on to say, when they are in any building that is owned, leased, or operated by or on behalf of the district unless an exemption or exception stated in this policy applies. And then we changed it to persons are not required to wear face coverings when they are outside of school district facilities but on the grounds of those facilities. Because we extended it to all persons, we also had to add a few sections back in that was in our policy last year. It's an exceptions for staff working alone when they can remove their face covering. We added back specific provisions for visitors in the buildings, and we added back face coverings at school board meetings. So those are the major changes that were accompanying the recommendations that all persons wear a face covering.
Questions or comments?
Go ahead.
I just have one nitpicky comment. So the page six, D, Part One, you say the exception of medical condition or disability, if a person asserts that he or she has a medical condition, I ask that it just be changed to they.
Where you got, page six?
Page six. Nope, keep going. Sorry, it's here. So the school board meetings.
Good catch. He or she? They. Okay. That's an easy fix.
Otherwise.
Yep. And I guess I should also add, as has been the case with this policy, we are, including in the resolution that we approve it under the emergency provisions of School Board Policy 208, because activities in buildings related to the school year are already underway, and the school year begins August 30th, and this policy must be immediately implemented in all district buildings to ensure safety of students, staff, and visitors.
I might just add parenthetically that the board has been, I don't know if inundated is too strong a term, but we have received many, many emails from families about masking. And I've been surprised, shocked, the number of parents who said, you have to have universal masking, it needs to be every person in the school, kids and adults, and you have to do it right now. We've gotten some, some other emails, and I had a conversation today with a woman, very intelligent conversation with a woman, who absolutely did not think masking was appropriate for kids. But it's been stunning, and I don't know, do you suppose it's been 15 to one, saying, maybe more than that? Keep our kids safe, and they're not going to be safe unless everybody's wearing a mask. So this is not a vote that the public is going to take, but I'm betting that if it were, it would be a landslide. You know, as Dr. Pakel said, none of us were thinking we'd have to go back to wearing masks this fall, but this is where we are right now, and the fastest way, the safest way to get through this is if we keep kids safe and so they're not going to be spreading the virus to, to people at home. Even vaccinated people, we know, can get COVID, this new variant. But I just think it's important for us to let the public know, we hear you. And again, it's not a vote that the community's going to take, but it's been an amazingly strong community response.
I think it's also important to remind the public that this is not a permanent decision.
Right. Right.
We're, we're both talking about the parameters under which the superintendent might make a recommendation to, to change the mask requirement. But we're also going to be talking at the policy committee as to how Policy 808 might be changed going forward to remove the who wears the mask from the policy and put it in another decision vehicle, whether it's under the superintendent's direction or whether it's by board resolution. But that has not yet been determined, but will be part of future conversations.
Really important point. And I have a question for one of you. The resolution that I'm seeing here now is approve the modified Policy 808 COVID face covering guidance, but there's no date on it?
Refresh your screen.
Refresh your screen, okay.
That was changed this afternoon, wasn't it?
Okay, so...
I was looking for it.
Okay, refresh. I haven't refreshed yet. So anyway, this is a briefing item. Does anybody want to move it to action?
Move.
Been moved and seconded? Any discussion about moving it to action?
Just one quick question in terms of enforcement.
Yeah.
Especially in light of the fact that it will include school board meetings as well?
Yes. That's a discussion we had at the hall, in the hall before the meeting started. So we'll all have to get back to you, to each other on that one. Excellent question. Okay, it's an action item, and because I don't have a refreshed screen here, would somebody else who has the correct resolution read it, please?
I can read the resolution.
Wait, did we vote to move it to action?
No, we didn't.
We didn't vote.
We did.
We motioned, we seconded.
Okay. All in favor of moving it to action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item. And the resolution is...
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approve the modified Policy 808 COVID face covering guidance. This policy becomes effective at 11:59 PM on Tuesday, 8/17/21.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. 9.03, Policy Committee Recommendations. This is the first reading of a number of policies that the policy committee has been working on. Ms. Workman, Ms. Amundson, and Ms. Nathan are our policy committee, and they do an enormous amount of work. I will turn it over to whomever.
And I have to give credit to Ms. Iverson as well because she is our keeper of the record.
Absolutely, Ms. Iverson.
The good news is that you only get to hear, only have to hear the briefing the first time we do the first reading of the policies. So my apologies that you're hearing me again tonight. Policies reviewed with no changes recommended is Policy 425 Staff Development. The purpose of this policy is to establish a staff development program and structure to carry out planning and reporting on staff development that supports improved student learning. Policy 501 Weapons Prohibition. The purpose of this policy is to assure a safe school environment for students, staff, and the public. Policy 503 Student Attendance. The purpose of this policy is to encourage regular school attendance. It is intended to be positive and not punitive. Policies reviewed and changes were recommended and approved by the policy committee. Policy 503.01 Age of Entrance to School. The purpose of this policy is to define the age eligibility requirements of kindergarten students. Updated policy language on the list of documents allowed for proof of a student's age. Policy 50303 Exception to Attendance, Transfer, and Placement. The purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines under which a student may attend to school outside of their legal and physical resident attendance area. The policy language is updated on the documentation, exceptions, the impact of RPS online school enrollment, and when a childcare exception to attendance ends. Policy 601 School District Curriculum and Instruction Goals. The purpose of this policy is to establish broad curriculum parameters for the school district that encompasses the Minnesota academic standards and federal law and are aligned with creating the world's best workforce. The policy language was updated on assessing students for gifted and talented programs, examining the equitable distribution of teachers for low-income and minority children, requirements for school district and school site goals, use of scientifically-based reading instruction, screening for dyslexia, reading assessments, instruction and interventions for students with reading difficulties, and reporting to parents and the Minnesota Department of Education. Policy 615 Testing Accommodations, Modifications, and Exemptions for IEPs, Section 504 Plans and LEP Students. The purpose of this policy is to provide adequate opportunity for students identified as having an individualized education plan, Rehabilitation Act of 1973, Section 504, Accommodation Plan, or English learner needs, to participate in statewide assessment systems designed to hold schools accountable for the academic performance of all students. The policy language is updated on the names of the assessments used and eligibility requirements for taking which assessments. Policy 620 Credit for Learning. The purpose of this policy is to recognize student achievement which occurs in post-secondary enrollment options, other advanced enrichment programs, other schools, alternative learning sites, and out-of-school experiences such as community organizations, work-based learning, and other educational activities and opportunities. Updated policy language on weighted grades and calculating a weighted grade point average. This language reflects the current practice in Rochester Public Schools. There was no change to current practice, just a match of policy language to the practice. We are recommending two policies for retirement. Policy 521.01 Inter-District Agreements and Policy 950 Cooperative Arrangements with Community-Based Organizations. Neither of these agreements are used by the district, so the recommendation was these policies could be retired. Procedures Reviewed with No Changes Recommended. Procedure 620A.1 Credit for Learning. This outlines the process for the transfer of academic requirements from other school districts, post-secondary institutions, online learning outside the school district setting, and credit by assessment. Procedures Reviewed with Changes Recommended. 503.01A Age of Entrance to School. We updated the procedure on the protocol for early entrance to kindergarten. And last but not least, we are retiring, recommending retiring. Procedure 615A Basic Skills Testing, Accommodations, and Modifications. All the steps in this procedure are currently included in Policy 615, so this procedure is no longer needed.
Thank you. And as Ms. Nathan said, those will show up two more times on our agenda, and then they will be included in the consent agenda for approval. So at this point, any additional information board members want to share? Any recommendations for future meetings? Items for future agendas? Hearing none, I would just announce that August 24th at 5 o'clock, we'll have a study session where we'll talk about the strategic plan and interim superintendent goals. And then we will have two regular board meetings in September, September 7th and September 21st, both at 5:30 PM. And at this point, it is 8:34 PM, and we are adjourned.